How are you? Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Laws of 1975, this meetings notice was sent to the Asbury Park Press on June 27, 2023, has been duly advertised in the Asbury Park Press issue of June 30, 2023. All municipal clerks of the townships, the boroughs within the regional high school district have been duly notified, and the requirements of this posting was met on June 27, 2023. Please rise to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as all.
Mr. Boyce, any changes to the executive agenda?
Yes, on the pre-printed agenda, item number four, negotiations, custodial maintenance and grounds, that was not discussed. That's the only change.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to take the approved minutes from September 28 regular board meeting? Mrs. Capiello?
I'm Ms. Lavin.
This is Lavin? Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, motion please.
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello? Mrs. Finelli? Mrs. Higley? Mrs. Lavin? Ms. McCob? Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
I have to abstain because I wasn't there.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Communications are on file in the Board Secretary's office, and now we're going to have the superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'll finish my report momentarily, but we do have a brief NJSLA testing presentation, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Henneker at this time.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so I'll just jump right in, I know we've got a lot to cover today. All right, so this presentation is regarding to the spring 2023 NJSLA and the DLM results. These assessments, though, they do test 21st century skills for our students. They also are accountability assessments. They're used for ESEA accountability to justify federal funding, and they're also used by KIC to evaluate the quality of our schools in New Jersey. So for the NJSLA, the ELA portion is taken only by freshmen, and then science is only taken by juniors. As far as math goes, the test of record is Algebra I. So if a student's ever going to be in an Algebra I course in high school, they don't test in math until they take Algebra I. For approximately half our students who take Algebra I in middle school, they'll take Algebra I when they get to, excuse me, they'll take another one of the two available assessments that are left, which would be the geometry or the Algebra II assessment. There's, for the NJSLA, there are five performance levels for ELA in math. Level four and five are what is considered proficient. The next series of slides will be the performance of the district compared to the state, and they'll show our performance across the performance bands. For ELA, you'll see that we're at 62.3% compared to 52% for the state. I also want to remind you of how we performed on the NJGPA. So the last presentation I did was the NJGPA, NJGPA. That's an assessment that juniors take. For that assessment, we were at 89.8%. So what that's showing is that the longer our students are with us, the more, the better off they're going to be in terms of performing on these standardized assessments. This is our subgroup performance. We use these results to obviously identify where our resources need to be directed. So these are informative for us in that we take, you know, for example, Title I funding to do our summer programming to support our students. We use Title II funding to support our staff in assessment methods and curriculum development. And then Title IV, we use to support overall access to technology and things like that. And then our Title III and Title III immigrant funds also support a summer program for our English learners and our newly arrived students. For this slide here, we have our performance on Algebra I. We're a little bit lagging behind the state, 26.2 to 35 at the state level. However, I just want to remind you that, you know, approximately half our students are taking Algebra I in middle school. So the students that take Algebra I in our district don't necessarily have the benefit of having had that opportunity in middle school. So they're, you know, these results are, and then according to that, that result. As with the ELA slide for subgroups, we also measure the subgroup performance for Algebra I, and we use these results again to identify needs for interventions accordingly. Next up, we have geometry. We're right there neck and neck with the state in terms of performance at 52, 50.2 compared to the state at 50.5. Again, reflecting on the NJGPA scores for math, our juniors scored at 67.8%. So again, the same scenario applies here as it did with the ELA. The longer students are with us, the more likely they're going to be proficient on these standardized assessments. As with the other results, we do show the subgroup performance, and this is subgroup performance compared to all students in the state, in the district. This slide is showing our Algebra II performance. You can see we significantly outpaced the state, which has a 53.7% proficiency rate. These are students who have taken both Algebra and Geometry II, for the most part, Algebra and Geometry II in middle school. So these are highly accelerated students. So you'll notice a small number of students that we do have assessing, assessed in this area, but the results speak for themselves, we're highly above the state. Likewise, this shows our performance of the subgroups. You'll note that not every subgroup is shown because when there's less than 20 students represented, we do not display those results, we don't want to inadvertently identify. So for science, there are four proficiency levels. The level three and level four are what are considered proficient, and again, juniors are the ones who take this assessment. And we can see with the science assessment, our results are comparable to the state. We're at 29.2 compared to the state at 29.8. Again, we have subgroup performance on science with the various subgroups available compared to our district students. The next set of results I'm going to show are for the Diagnostic Learning Maps Assessment. This is an alternative assessment designed for students with significant cognitive disabilities who cannot participate in the general NJSLA assessment even with accommodations. So this is approximately 1% of our students take the DLM. There are four, there are also four performance levels for the DLM. Levels three and four are considered proficient. On this slide, we see our performance in ELA, math and science. I don't show the state results because the results from the NJ does, NJGPA does not release the DLM results until later in the school year, so there's no comparison currently available. However, in the past, I would like to note that we do exceed the state significantly in terms of performance.
Can you say that again, Mr. Henneker?
Yeah, we, as I would like to say that, in the past, when those results are available, I would like to share that we do exceed the state significantly in performance on the DLM. And then finally, Slide 19 is a repeat of what I showed during our last assessment presentation. These are the various interventions we put into place to support our students and our teachers. Again, we use federal funding to support some summer programming for our Title I students. We now have three schools that are eligible for Title I funding. We have Freehold Borough, which has been in place for a number of years. We have Colts Neck High School, and now Freehold Township High School. And then we have the first school tutoring, after-school tutoring, all schools offer that, as well as various other interventions. Any questions?
I couldn't help but notice the signs in math, are they equal or above the state?
Yeah.
Does that go down?
Has it gone down? It's usually been around that, usually about comparable with the state. One thing about juniors that I want to note, and I know this is true across the state, but you know, in Freehold Regional, these are students who have been through a barrage of assessments their junior years, right? You've got SAT you're taking, a lot of our students are eligible for AP testing, so they're taking their APs. By the time they get to the science assessment, I mean, honestly, if I were a junior, I'd be pretty much tested at that point, so.
So when we say we're equal above, it's good.
Yeah, and we hope to be always, you know, we always want to exceed, but you know, when we're not, we're very close.
Thank you.
And some of those, the science test.
The science test is problematic to begin with, mostly because, I blew it out. Mostly because a component of it is physics that many of the juniors haven't even had yet when they take that assessment, so it's a problem to begin with. I was chiming that in before.
Any other questions? Yes.
Is, just to kind of piggyback off of that a little bit, is the science assessment counted as part of their, is proficiency counted as part of their graduation requirement?
It is not, it is not.
So that's also part of it, I'm sure, is that they don't care because it doesn't count?
Yeah, and we can see on the NJGPA, where we have more than two-thirds of our students proficient on math and nearly 90% proficient on ELA, this is a test that counts. They step up when they know it's a graduation requirement.
Thank you, Mr. Henneker.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One other additional note, we did, the Freel Regional High School District did receive formal notice of an updated state aid notice for $6.7 million. So that, that has confirmed that S2 is no longer applicable for both this year and next school year to the Freel Regional High School District. That's a huge boon for us, obviously. And we discussed this earlier, and Amanda had a great sort of segue where she said, "It's like somebody returned your wallet, but the cash isn't there." So we can't forget that we were cut. The $23, $24 million that we were cut has not gone away. We are just no longer being cut, and we are incredibly grateful for that. But the compounded dollars that are different from S2 is, what, $55 million, Mr. Boyce, right? So if S2 had never come into existence, that has resulted in a $55 million differential for this school district, which is significant. The next level of work for the state is to address the school funding formula itself, and hopefully to put in some safeguards so districts don't end up in such catastrophic ways as we were. But again, we are incredibly grateful to Senators Gopao, Senator Scanlon, our local municipal leaders who all advocated to get the legislation passed that resulted in that $6.7 million for us and the elimination of further cuts. So we will start rebuilding the structural integrity of this district because it was, you know, we were really at a difficult crossroads financially, so, all good. And, you know, obviously, tonight is my last board meeting here at the Freel Regional High School District, so, you know, we, we had a wonderful event last week, and I get to say, you know, what was on my mind to a lot of the folks who were very important to me. But I do want to publicly thank the board for 13 years of absolute unmitigated support to allow me to do this job to the best of my ability and to always support the decisions that, that I made even, you know, even at times when board members may have not necessarily disagreed, but thought there might be other ways, they always supported me. And, and that's rare, so I'm very grateful for that. I am grateful for the leadership team that I have assembled. Lot of years together, Nicole Hazel will be great. Wish her all the best, a great choice, been my right arm for almost 13 years. Mr. Boyce has been my left arm for almost 13 years. That's an unprecedented run that sits at this table. You don't see that in a senior leadership team in schools. I think that pretty much almost everyone that's sitting in the audience was promoted while I've been here. And so we have, I think there are somewhere around 70 administrative positions across the district, and I think that 67 of them have been promoted under my watch, which I'm incredibly proud of. We have the best team. I'm thankful for the directors and the principals here who have always made me look good by doing all the real nitty-gritty hard work. You know, Mrs. Higley's at the table, but she was a principal here. Mr. Bruno was a CICA here, you know, so we, we have a lot of time spent together. I am really, really grateful for everyone who came together and just worked here. You know, and I'll, I'll close with saying, you know, my grandfather, you know, those of you who know me, really was more like my dad, my mom was very young, but he worked for Delco Factory in New Brunswick, and I've told this story before, but he worked there for 37 years, and he never missed a day of work. He really just never missed a day of work, and it was a physically demanding job. And as he got older, I remember thinking, I was like 11 or 12, and I thought he really loved his job because he went every day. And we were having a conversation, and I said, "Man, you know, I hope, I hope I love my job as much as you love your job." And he looked at me and he said, "I hate every damn day." He said, "I go to that factory so you don't have to, and don't ever forget that." And I never have. And so whenever work gets tough, or there's a big political place and people come at you, I just always think about that, and it kind of goes away. So running here has been great and very thankful, so.
That'll be that.
Breaking the mic. We do have, we do have one board report tonight, and that would be finance, Mr. Messinger.
All right, we actually had our meeting last Monday or Tuesday, I can't remember which day it was. We spent a lot of time going over the paving projects that were done over the summer at both Mall Borough and Freehold Township. We also talked about the fact, and this is on tonight's agenda, we're going to vote on it. There's authorization on there to submit approval for co-op hockey, ice hockey between Freehold Township and Point Pleasant Borough. There was also big news that we're now implementing direct deposit for all the employees' paychecks. There will be no more paychecks given out. No more paper. Yes, it's all going to be direct deposit. And then we wrapped it up just with a big 10,000-foot view of capital planning. You know, we all know about the financial distress that we've been under and how we just don't have the money for infrastructure going forward. Obviously, we had our last referendum, got approved for roofing and paving, so we just talked about how, you know, going, and this is something that's been talked about before at these meetings, that there will be referendums in our future unless the state of New Jersey changes the funding formula, and who knows what's going to be with that. So at some point, we're going to need a set of fresh eyes to really look over the next five to seven years to really prioritize what the infrastructure requirements are going to be for the district. And just one of the things we talked about in terms of priorities looking out over the next few years, Colts Neck Track in particular is something that really needs to be looked at. And that's, that was, those were the highlights.
Dr. Donnie is about to shake his head. I can feel like he likes that. Thank you. There is no party here tonight to speak, no public participation. Mr. Boyce, are there any changes to the agenda?
The only changes to the agenda are the two addendums in the back. One of them, for I, III, and IV, were part of the printed agenda with resolutions to be provided at the meeting, so they're, they're there. And the other are additional items on G1, G2, G5, G6, and G11, which are all existing resolutions, and that's all.
May I have a motion to approve agenda items G1 through G11?
Motion.
Did you get the chip? Yep. Any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, roll call please.
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli? Mrs. Higley?
Yes, except for Matthew Colson on G4, abstain.
Ms. Lavin? Ms. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Next is Programmed Operations Buildings, Transportation, and Physical Plant. May I have a motion to approve H1 through I4?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. McCob? I didn't hear the second.
Second.
We need a second.
Second.
Mrs. Higley, thank you. Any discussion? Not, no discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli? Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Educational Programs and Administration, J1 through K2. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
That was, this, and Mrs. Capiello. This, any discussion? Not hearing any discussion, roll call?
Mrs. Bruno? Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli? Mrs. Higley? Ms. Lavin? Mr. McCob?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi? Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno, just, this is at the end of the, couple of items that I failed to mention, and I just want to make sure I do mention, we did have Spooktacular, and it was probably the most perfect day we've had for Spooktacular in years. And for those who don't know, Spooktacular is when all six of our high schools, art students come together and paint the windows in downtown Freehold, and it's a wonderful exercise in sort of project management from start to finish, conceptualizing idea, drafting that out, coming and getting that done within a time limit at the town. The Spooktacular folks will be here at the November meeting, and we'll recognize them publicly at that point, but they're wonderful volunteers, and it's a, it's a really unique community event. And then we did also have our band festival, which is also another unique event to Freel Regional High School District, where our six bands come together and, and perform one evening, and they all do, you know, a couple numbers individually, and then all six bands come together for one final number, and it's just a really cool experience if you haven't, if you haven't seen that. And then the last piece, I do want to recognize Dr. Mary Huff, Mary, if you could stand. So Mary has been approved as the new Director of Curriculum and Instruction. Mary came to us from vocational school way back when, but we won't hold that against you, Mary, and has done an incredible job as an English supervisor and assistant principal, instrumental in helping us get International Baccalaureate up and running during Mrs. Higley's tenure at Freehold Township, and has her, has her doctorate in instructional side of the house from Rutgers. Being a Rutgers person is also a plus, Dr. Huff, just saying. And we're looking forward to her as, you know, Dr. Hazel builds out the team once I'm, once I'm gone. So congratulations, Mary.
I think we have a report, right, from the Executive Student Cabinet? JJ?
On behalf of the Executive Student Cabinet and those members that came before us and all of the students of the Freehold Regional High School District, we thank you for your dedication and support. We have been afforded so many great educational opportunities and experiences at the Freehold Regional High School District because of your leadership.
We hope this gift reminds you of us and all the students you have positively impacted during your years as superintendent.
I'm sorry I'm not getting to work with this group, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, a few weeks back, I emailed Rebecca, I said, "Could you just throw together a little video of Dr. Samson's years here so we can close the board meeting with a little video? See how he aged through the years?"
30 pounds ago, for sure.
We'll see for ourselves. Anyway, so this is a little farewell video from all of us at Central Office of the Board, and thank you, Rebecca, for pulling it together.
This is embarrassing.
This is embarrassing.
I think it hasn't changed that much. Okay, so we're going to go to old business. Anybody has any old business? Any new business?
If I may?
Wait.
I, I don't know, is it? I just wanted to say congratulations to all of the bands and the band directors that participated at the band festival on Tuesday. It was the first time I had the opportunity to go to the band festival, and it was quite amazing. And having everybody come together at the very end for God Bless America was very, very chilling, and it was a pleasure to see. And it was also a pleasure to see all of the beautifully decorated windows in downtown Freehold with the Spooktacular art projects, so that was fantastic.
And it wasn't as cold. Tuesday night was not as bad as it has been. The next year, we have to remind Dr. Howe to bring a coat. Walking around with no coat. Any new business? Oh, yes, our Howe athletes, Saturday, they're going to play CDA, The Boys, in the Shore Conference Finals. So good luck to the Rebels.
Yeah, can we give a shout out?
It's at Neptune High School. Oh, are they?
Yeah, was that, aren't the girls volleyball team doing great?
Girls soccer is also in the finals. Awesome, great. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I think she just broke a record. Okay, may I have a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
Good luck.